Well, welcome to the November twenty fifth Rochester Common Council meeting. The note, if you weren't here last meeting, don't vote and don't sign the minutes, correct? So you get all the paperwork done. So we need to, if you're okay with the minutes from last meeting, please make a motion.
Second.
I didn't make the motion. I can't. It's been moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Yes, I do. I have several, actually. We received Compassionate Health Center thank you from one of the board members. Says, we thank you for your generous support of the Compassionate Health Center. This allows us to continue caring for the uninsured of Fulton County. John Haste from G E is the board member. Send that around. And then, as you notice, you probably need sunglasses in here at the moment, or it looks like an airport hangar. But we're getting dimmers. They're just not up yet.
So they're not so bright.
I did not know that we're going to be this bright or we're going to have this many, but there we go. And they're LED, so we should be saving money. And if you notice, it's not hot. In fact, I'm kind of chilly, so.
That's the. John will be just fine.
Yes, exactly. You guys won't be like a chicken anymore. And then the, in your packets, yes, I'm getting ready to go there. Those are tablets.
What you were about to say.
And the package just shows the tablets that I'm planning on getting. I had Matt Campbell research everything, and they're on sale for a hundred and seventy-five dollars off. This Black Friday time period here. So I know also the back, I think there's tells you the pertinent features, but Amy, you can write on the screen. And you can pull it out like a Post-it note. There's all kinds of really good things on there, so. Anyway, so, and there's also, I've checked on the security for them. And you can set up a separate folder with your own password and all that sort of stuff to keep the actual documents secure. And then if you're in someplace where it's like, well, like here, guest wifi, you can use, it's called wifi select. And it prevents hacking if you're in a public place, like an airport or hotel or something like that, so. So it's got quite a few nice features to it. So like I said, Matt Campbell, a lot of good research on it. So I just need to know tonight how many, I know that Ruth does in March, but that's the only ones I've heard from. And John doesn't.
So from my perspective, I'm still going to print out my stuff at the library.
Right, but do you want the tablets?
I should waste the money on it because I probably, I could.
No, you would rather, oh, yeah.
It's three dollars and fifty cents.
Okay.
It's three dollars and fifty cents. I like to, I'm sitting.
Okay, that's fine, so.
I mean, it's not a lot of money, but I probably.
Amy's a no. Got it? Bob?
I'll give it a try.
I think you should.
My little laptop, I have a work rate.
No, you're going to get tablet.
Because I can use my own computer, right, that I have?
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Does it come with a twelve year old to show them how to use it?
There's a twelve year old is going to help me.
Who else wants one? So Brian said yes.
You're still getting, use your phone.
I'm still able to read my phone, so yes.
There you go. That's it. Point that out. Okay.
So we can save what? Three hundred dollars?
So.
Because there'll be another sale if we need it, right? There'll be another sale next year if we need it.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so you got it? Okay, before we go on to.
Any issue with the old laptops that we had? We used to, I think we had one for everybody.
Well, yes, those have been passed out to everybody. As a matter of fact, Trent, Jane and I each have one of them.
Well, I was going to say, if they're just sitting, we can sell them.
Yeah, no, we purpose them all and we checked those before. We went to the tablet route, but they, the ones that are left don't have, the battery's gone, not working right. And then the board's not working right, so we decided just to get something new, so everybody be consistent. So, and you will have to set it up with your own password, so we'll have little initials on the back of it as to who owns that tablet unless you're going to take it home to.
So, just, so there won't be paper anymore after?
No, but I will have a copy up here if anybody wants to touch it and see it. You can do.
But you're still sending.
You'll have the pack, you'll have the sign, you know, the signature one too. So there you go. You guys will see it. We use over two reams of paper every council meeting.
It's a smart decision because everybody prints it off.
Yeah, so, okay.
All right, before we go further with the public hearing, Andy needs to leave. So Andy, do you have any?
Half hour at least.
Well, let's just go ahead and do it because I don't know how involved we're going to get. So do you have any report you want to make?
The crime law. Eight hundred and fifty-seven, two hundred and forty-five stop stops, under one lines, a lot of people incarcerated. And then by accepting apps right now, we have a resignation on the department, so we're accepting apps.
Do we have any questions for Andy? A resignation for another department? Anything else for Andy? I told you I'd get you up front, so.
I think that we need these special minutes, right, Beth? Special budget meeting minutes?
Yes. Yes, I know. I just pointed out, that also needs to be approved, or would you consider?
I don't think we did that as, I don't.
I think we should specifically.
Go ahead and make a motion to approve.
To approve that.
Second. Move it in second, all in favor say aye. And again, if you haven't, if you weren't here for the fourteenth meeting, don't sign it. You should have made the motion. At least don't sign it. Okay, so Scott, it sounds like we need to make a motion to open a public hearing.
Don't move.
Brian Fitzpatrick seconded. Brian Goodman made the motion. All in favor say aye. God, take it away.
And counsel, famous Scott Frisell, I'm. Pre-Davault. So the first item tonight is the public hearing for the GO bonds. The city is required to appropriate the proceeds of the bonds. These bonds, again, will be sold on December sixteenth to the Indiana Bond Bank. And the city will receive proceeds equal to two point eight million before cost of issuance. And so this public hearing, again, is to appropriate those bond proceeds. And then we'll move forward with selling the bonds on December sixteenth. So if anyone has any comments for the public?
You want to have any comments or questions?
And there's no action, we'll do the appropriation in the ordinance when we adopt that tonight.
No comment, then we need a motion to close the public hearing? I'll second. Ruth or Brian, one second.
Second.
Yep, Margaret's saying.
I said so much alike.
Okay, so you might as well just hang out up there for.
That works.
Okay, old business, ordinance thirty-three dash two zero two five. Now, we did the first reading last meeting. So all we need to do is the second and third reading tonight.
Yes, the second and third reading tonight of ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two-five, which is titled, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Rochester, Indiana Authorizing the Issuance of General Obligation Bonds for the Purpose of Providing Funds to Pay the Cost of Purchasing Certain Property in Local Municipal Public Improvement Projects Within the City Providing for the Payment of Such Bonds From Ad Valorem Taxes to Be Levied Upon All of the Taxable Property Located in the City Providing for the Safeguarding of the Interests of the Owners of Said Bonds Appropriating the Proceeds Derived from the Sale of Such Bonds Other Matters Connected Therewith Including Repealing Ordinances Inconsistent Herewith. So this ordinance has not been changed since the last meeting. Again, it authorizes the city to issue its general obligation bond, series twenty-two-five, in an amount not to exceed two point eight million dollars with an interest rate not to exceed seven percent and a term not to exceed eleven years. As part of the ordinance, the city is pledging its ad valorem property taxes to the repayment of these bonds. And then the debt service will be payable on January fifteenth and July fifteenth with interest and principal payments beginning July fifteenth, twenty-two-five. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Twenty-two-six, sorry, yes. Or pass.
Andy Perkins, since he read this ordinance, do we have to read it again before we vote on the second reading?
Um, read the title. Yeah, you read, you read the, you read the title last month?
We did everything by title only, yeah.
Yeah, you can, you can still do it by title.
But he already read it to us by title. Can we just vote on that second reading since he read it and then we read it again? Or do we need to read it from up here again?
I would, I would read it from the desk, remember, just to be. He's an advocate.
Okay.
The second reading of ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two-five, by title only, if no objections. All right, ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Rochester, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of purchasing certain property and local municipal public improvement projects within the city. Providing for the payment of such bonds from ad valorem taxes to be levied upon all of the taxable property located in the city. Providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds. Appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of such bonds, other matters connected therewith, including repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith. Okay, so at this time, we'll have a third reading of ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two-five by title only. Ordinance number thirty-three dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Rochester, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of purchasing certain property and local municipal public improvement projects within the city. Providing for the payment of such bonds from ad valorem taxes to be levied upon all of the taxable property located in the city. Providing for the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of said bonds. Appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of such bonds, other matters connected therewith, including repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith.
Okay, we need a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-three dash two zero two five.
Don't move.
I'm moving the second all in favor, raise your right hand. Six oh. Okay, resolution two-nine dash two zero two-five.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so this is a resolution of the City of Rochester, Indiana, adopting a fiscal plan for the annexation of certain territory into the city. This is dealing with the strater annexation, which includes five parcels consisting of approximately one hundred and ninety-four point three seven acres as outlined on the map attached to exhibit B of the ordinance. Again, as part of that annexation process, state law requires the city to adopt a fiscal plan. And so the city's municipal advisor, Baker Tilly, prepared this fiscal plan that's before you this evening. That's attached to exhibit A of this resolution. That fiscal plan outlines services of a non-capital nature, such as fire and police services. And then services of a capital improvement nature, such as street construction, water, sewer and other facilities. And the report determines basically that this annexation is not going to have a material impact to the city. Like there's a couple of thousand dollars in costs for fire and police services. And right now, the parcels are all currently assessed as agricultural, so they will be exempt from the city's tax rate until that classification changes. So basically until development starts on the property. And then once that occurs, the city would start receiving its portion of the tax rate, subject to constitutional caps and assessments.
So I just asked the question because it is in my district. So it was odd. So I've read like a million of these, it feels like lately. And so what made it so that there was an impact or that, I think it was actually, and I did check with Andy and I did check with Dwayne, and they said they're not worried about it. But what made it so that there was an impact fiscally, it's not material versus like other times there wasn't? What was the difference?
The dollar value that was reported?
What was it that?
I, I, I don't know that answer unfortunately, since this was prepared by Baker Tilly.
Four thousand dollars, but it was just odd and different than normal, so.
I'm guessing that they're trying to be more specific on the numbers versus just a general, like, this is not a material impact. And so they probably calculated what anticipated mileage, like fuel costs and vehicle wear and tear and stuff would be. But like you said, it was about four thousand.
When I looked at it, which I just thought was kind of odd to note, so I think it's just fun to ask.
I think part of it may have also been street maintenance, like the roads, because the city will take over responsibility for maintenance for those roads. And so that may have been part of the cost that they determined that the county has been spending X dollars a year to maintain those roads.
It's like fifteen hundred for the police. For that. For the streets.
Streets, yeah.
Any other questions on resolution twenty-nine dash two zero two-five? If not, resolution two-nine dash two zero two-five, a resolution of the City of Rochester, Indiana, adopting a fiscal plan for the annexation of certain territory into the city, the motion to approve.
Don't move.
Moving the second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Fast, okay. Onto ordinance two-six dash two zero two-five.
Thank you, Mayor. So ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-two-five is an ordinance, City of Rochester, Indiana, annexing certain territory and declaring the same to be part of the city. This ordinance has not changed since the last meeting. And again, this is dealing with the strater annexation of five parcels consisting of approximately one hundred and ninety-four point three seven acres. So tonight, we're seeking approval of this ordinance. Happy to answer any question.
We did the first reading last meeting, so we're up for the second and third.
Okay, we'll have the second read of ordinance number twenty-six dash twenty-two-five by title only, as long as there are no objections. Hey, ordinance number twenty-six dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance of the City of Rochester, Indiana, annexing certain territory and declaring the same to be a part of the city. Okay, at this time, we'll have the third reading of ordinance number twenty-six dash twenty-two-five by title only. Order number twenty-six dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance of the City of Rochester, Indiana, annexing certain territory and declaring the same to be a part of the city.
Okay, there's no further questions. We need a motion to approve ordinance number two-six dash two zero two-five.
Don't move.
Brian Fitzpatrick seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. Pass at six oh. Hey. Onto any other old business? And you want a signed copy to take with you, you want to send it to you?
You could send me copies of that, but I do have a couple dock.
For me to sign after the meeting?
Yeah, we could do it after.
All right. Sign that. Okay, new business, ordinance three-eight dash two zero two-five. And this is, that's to run with.
Um, I'm sorry, yes. I'm referring with an attorney. We can do all three readings tonight.
Because we have a floor, because we have six.
And this is just changing the, which Amy pointed out when I first started way back last year, and I went training, that the thresholds were wrong in this. So we are now, but we have been operating under the assumption that it was fifty thousand dollars, even though this said seventy-five thousand. So we've been going along with the state and complying with the state, where the counts and the state in that, using the fifty thousand. But I'm now adjusting the ordinance so that actually sells for two thousand instead of seventy-five.
Good. Wildly.
Yeah.
All right. Introduction of ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty-two-five. We'll begin with the first reading by title only. Ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty-two-five, amendment to the City of Rochester purchasing policy and ordinance three dash twenty-two-four. Okay, that was the first reading of ordinance thirty-eight twenty-two-five. At this time, we'll have the second reading by the ordinance thirty-eight twenty-two-five by title only, as long as there are no objections. Okay, ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty-two-five, amendment to the City of Rochester purchasing policy and ordinance zero-three dash twenty-two-four. We do want to have a third tonight?
Yeah.
You're fine.
Okay, so at this time, we'll have the third reading of ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty-two-five by title only. Ordinance number thirty-eight dash twenty-two-five, amendment to the City of Rochester purchasing policy and ordinance zero-three dash twenty-two-four.
And the motion to approve ordinance number three-eight dash two zero two-five.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We're seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. Pass at six oh. Okay, any other new business? Only other thing I've got is we finally have reached the agreement with, who is it? Who's the company? CTI, I think it is, for a sound system. It'll have, I think, a couple drop down mics. Four speakers, maybe, so that you can hear back in the back, especially from the quieter talker. So they will improve things here. May not be by next meeting, since we've had an earlier in the month meeting, which brings us to the point, what is that date?
December sixteenth.
Okay, so December sixteenth is our next council meeting. That is a Tuesday night, correct?
I'm waiting for that night too, because there's a lot of, we're at year end, where I'm going to have to prepare. I need to put what we did for the end of the year.
Okay, so if there's no other new business, Julie.
RDP is gearing up for holiday stroll, which is a week from Friday. Santa's house, if you notice, is down by Centennial Park. And Monday morning, properly before we all go to work, a crane is setting on its pad. Um, there's a new sidewalk and path. Hot chocolate, horse parrot fries, all, all fun, two hours, which is a half hour shorter than last year. We have a singer coming down to Santa's house. The band's coming, Frosty the Snowman just leading the parade. Kudos to Paul Carpenter for agreeing to wear an outfit. We're looking for an Olaf. We have the costume if anyone wants to do that.
Trent?
As well.
Trent would look good in that.
But no.
We can't talk chocolate. We are going to have elephant ears and mini helmets this year, so pretty good. Everyone's excited. Marketing started yesterday and you'll see it really kick in.
And the times, the times you just said.
Five to seven. We started it a little earlier. Our target audience seems to be about five years old and they like to be home in bed by maybe eight. We're at, working with Indiana Art Commission, there's a whole bunch of projects going down for the two-hundred-and-fifty amp and then First Rate for America next summer. And we're in a competitive category. Only twelve communities will be selected or projects. We have to come up with something fun. For two-fifty, it's a non-matching grant, so we're working on that. Maybe we could get the Lake Manitoba sign back on the courthouse square or something. We're working on that. But past that, end of the year paperwork, getting it all wrapped up, it goes fast. But from here on out, as we all know, theater is kicking into a really busy season. Pink Floyd is this weekend, on Saturday, and a Christmas show on Sunday, and you'll, you'll just see boom, boom, boom after this. We had a huge crowd last weekend. I think Ruth got.
Before and after.
Yep.
It's very nice.
And I, we're really close to a sellout on Saturday. There should be about three hundred and fifty people in town. Sunday, Christmas music wonderfully produced at four o'clock, if anyone is around for a matinee. But we're working on all sorts of good stuff.
Before we go on, you got anything from the county, Rick? Just here, just to appreciate it.
Thanks, Julie, for Boo Fest. Absolutely. You was up there, I know. People was unreal. Great event.
They were everywhere.
I couldn't believe it.
I don't know where they come from.
There's no, really no way to ask.
We've been reaching out into Warsaw.
They, they have to be.
And I'm telling you, I, our social media is on fire right now. And I wish I could tell you, I know three things we've been doing, but those three things can't reproduce what's going on on our pages. It's just, it's wonderful. Every share matters. We're really getting out there. A lot of our posts are hitting three to six thousand people. And we're putting, oh, and if you come to the theater, please, or even if you don't want to see the show, please poke your head in. That big screen is up. It's unbelievable. And the community reach on that is going to be fantastic. RTC is helping us to produce. You can literally see it from the road. Ruth was, I mean, it's cool, but we've already got our first round of advertisers on there and it's a pretty neat thing to see. It's the highest resolution in the region right now.
Nice.
Tell it isn't, but it, it's a really cool thing. Really elevates the shows.
I think the theater has really helped get the extra communities out. There's more people coming in because husband and wife came over to look at the theater, so now they're bringing their friends back to town. So it's all over.
I have neighbors with Chicago people coming down this weekend. A lot of like people will tell you, they decide their schedule on our live shows. It's just, it's, it's really cool that it's starting to multiply. So we're approaching thirty-five thousand visitors.
Wow.
Nice.
Since we've reopened, so we, we track a lot of stuff.
Thank you.
Food, food, truck festivals are on the books for RDP next year, which will be like ten to fifteen tracks.
Okay, area plan, animal.
Uh, area plan, we met Monday, yesterday? Yeah, that was yesterday. Oh, my God, time flies. Talking about Maple Crest and did everything necessary to move them. What I was really proud of was Maple Crest's work said that we have made it exceptionally easy to work with. And that he feels like this is the fastest, most productive project that they've ever worked on in the region. So I took that as credit for everybody in this room that's worked on that. So, um, animal adoption, on December eighteenth, there's going to be a live event, so I can send the flyer if you want. But they have gotten this gentleman, Chris Rotanda. He has, in four and a half years, raised thirteen million dollars, not just for us, but for other entities. And on December eighteenth, there will be a live event from ten AM to one PM. They'll have games, challenges and other things that you can do. And he is chosen Fulton County to partner with for whatever reason. It does not say why, but we, I don't care because it's exciting to partner with. Um, it is December eighteenth, and it looks like it's from ten AM to one PM. And I may just forward this email to all y'all that came from Jody, just so you have it. But if he can raise that much money, it says that in January twenty-twenty-one, he hit the road on a fifty-state tour and basically raised all of that money. So, yep, so that is pretty exciting. So I'll forward that for all y'all to see what we can do there, so.
Brian, Bedco.
That's a couple of things. And I mean, most of you know, Janet did receive ready funds for her little zubbies, we received two and a half million dollars for the industrial park. We have interest in multiple lots at Blacketer. The funny thing there is Duke was one of them, and they found out they'd be in R E M C, so they decided not.
That is funny.
That is actually. Things always reconsider.
And Marshall Cole will be next year's president. That's what I have.
I'll add some to that. Last week or ten days, we've had three new, I guess, knock on the doors for possible landing of a small business. I wouldn't call it a large thing yet, but it's, you know, you're, you never know now, day to day, when you might get a call, somebody wanting to do something. So that's exciting. Uh, we're still working with them. We are heavily engaged with a developer on a new hotel. Um, I told the RDP this morning, I, I, I'm calling it probable because it looks very probable. I mean, it almost looks certain next spring or early summer, construction may start on that. So we're trying to get prepared for that. We've got a couple of other things, like Hugh mentioned, we're trying to find an alternative site for Duke. We may have one. And it's not a substation, it's just more mostly a kind of office place to, I don't even know exactly, but it's not a substation. I just know, that's all I know, so.
I'm just curious what.
Why, they let their old building, right?
No, they're still on it.
They're still in.
But they're, they're, they're landlocked, so that's why.
Okay.
I'm just curious. There's no, no idea what they're going to do with that building.
So we're having, having these, you know, meetings called upon us to discuss opportunities for these businesses. So that's exciting. That's about all I've got on Bedco. And Charlie's received some of those calls. Michael received some of those calls. I received, have received some of those calls, so. We're all, all working together to get some things done, so. All right, park board, Bob?
I missed the meeting back on November tenth, but it looks like, from what I can see, they light up the park. It's coming up on December thirteenth. And it looks like we got into a pretty good discussion on picnic tables.
That what?
Picnic table. Placing some on the city level, and these newer ones were bolting down because people like to mess. Placing some on the city level and these newer ones were bolting down because people like to mess with them. And so we can't really just unbolt them and bring them to the downtown events. So we've talked to RDP, we've talked to the chamber about. She's looking for grants possibly to get some of their own picnic tables. Street Department has room to store them for her. But since we're gonna immobilize our picnic tables. Uh, eventually we're gonna get rid of all the wooden ones and we can't really move those over to these events. So we're asking them to look into buying their own. So that was a big discussion, so. Anything else, Bob?
That's all I know of.
Okay, I guess. Still some discussion and they they took a trip last Friday, if you um to Kokomo to look at different playground equipment for possible replacing. Vansler and or J C Park. So they they went down, looked at some different uh ideas, so. Don't know what all came from that, so. Okay, B Z A and Council on Aging, Mark.
B Z A was to meet last week, but it was canceled for lack of the forum, so that is rescheduled for December ten. At six-thirty. I don't know if they're changing the time on that meeting or not, but anyway, that that's. B Z A uh had a great meeting with Council on Aging yesterday. Biggest news is that the two new vans that have been parked for months um actually being repaired tomorrow.
Great.
So we'll be on the road on Monday, so.
Okay.
And here's how silly this whole thing is. The uh parts are here. And they said, well, just drive the van out, uh, have a wait because the repair. Is such a small repair, it's unbelievable, did it in matter of minutes. Yeah, but I think how many vehicles have been parked around the state for the last few months? It's crazy. But uh. Count uh R S V P had a lot of good news. They uh are working on their trips for twenty-twenty-six. And they know they're going on a four-day Mississippi River tour. And they're also going to Nashville at Christmas time. Uh, in, at the end of, or at the beginning of twenty-five, they. Did prepare a hundred and twenty-five tax returns for local folks and. Uh, they're gearing up for the tax season again uh for twenty-twenty-six. At the uh Wellness Center, we're actually uh getting a new roof on the building, I think that.
We're paying for it.
Yeah. Eminent, it's it's happening any day now.
Uh, Monday, I think is what I heard. If it's not, I don't know how, what the temperature needs to be to put rubber roofing on, but. It may be too cold, but we'll see. But the plan was next Monday.
And uh, and we don't meet in December at Council on Aging, so our next meeting will be January twenty-sixth. Any questions?
By the way, sorry to see.
Solid ones. Um, they were very pleased with their um. Their tire donation and they kind of talked about giving tires, they kind of talked about, why don't we charge and all that other stuff and. They determined that it would go in in the dump instead if we did. So we take them free. We're side ditches and then we have to clean them up and the city will give it to them anyway. Yeah, you know, so, so, yeah, so they do that every year, free of charge, make nothing off of it really, but uh. But very good. It actually costs them to. To, to get rid of them. Yeah, they get a good deal on it since they're not making any money. Yeah, it's not their business. So, and uh, for some reason, trash is up, so that means that they made more money. Yeah, so and the, I mean, up in general, usually you see a little bit of an increase, but not like this. For some reason, people are cleaning things out. I blamed it on the aging community.
Good enforcement.
Good enforcement. Do you think that's what it was?
Trent's like, I'm gonna take that one.
You'll take that one. Well, now, most of the trash is from out of state. I I mean, so it's really not. It really was not trash from uh Rochester and Fulton County. It was trash from out of state, so. And most of our trash is always from out of state. Yes. Yeah. But they'll take the little bit of extra money and and not ask questions.
East slope is getting built over time.
Getting built over time.
I'm gonna leave the nineteen-eighties picture on the front.
The biggest flooding in the north.
Yeah, if we ever get snow. We haven't got snow. Can't get snow. Um, ours is just visible. I mean, if you start looking, if you start looking, you can see a lot of landfills around Indiana. It's amazing what you go. Ah, well, that one's been there for a while, hasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get up there.
And RDP, I didn't.
R D C.
R D C.
We got a meeting tomorrow morning.
Yeah, we got a meeting tomorrow morning.
Um, nothing really do on there. We're waiting on a site development plan for the area south of where the. Water tower is going to be. There's actually thirty-three acres down there, thirteen that we own, twenty that the Striger family has op uh looking at optioning for this project. And that would be a design build type of a home uh addition, uh selling lots. Um. Anybody interested would contract their local, their contractor of choice and build the home as they would like it. So that's what we're looking at for that area. Waiting on that uh, I think we've got a meeting here next week or week after. Uh, don't know if that's what for the site plan or not, but they called it some, it might be, so we'll know more next meeting. Sidewalk tree board, Brian, mainly.
Yeah, the tree board met on the number four. Um, some highlights of Main Border, gave update on the Fourth Street sidewalk project, McDonald's sidewalk project and the city park designated walkway. Uh, tree board, they talked about uh tree removal on Main Street and the uh contractor that was doing that. They uh revised the. The process for. Request or complaints coming in for tree removal, working with the uh. Street superintendent and the clerk here, the in the office and getting things done that way and hopefully it'll. It maybe it'll work better, maybe it won't be work better, but we'll see. Uh. Looking to, whether they're going to get an update on the tree inventory, still don't know that yet. And, and maybe the biggest thing was that they renamed the. The, instead of the two boards, it's the sidewalk and tree commission now. Where is where?
Everything on the water really, I was there, but there was nothing really to discuss with the water board. Um. The only other thing we have is the warming center. Was it open last night? Because we didn't hit forty-five.
Uh, it was.
It was. So typically.
It's the wind chill as well.
Okay, um, but the warming center was open as of last Saturday evening. Um, there's a whole lot of sign-up opportunity for those who want to volunteer to help with that and they need a lot of help, so.
And Tammy specifically wrote me today and said that we do need overnights, so we do have an abundance of individuals from five forty-five until eleven forty-five. We need uh, or excuse me, uh, five forty-five till midnight. We need eleven forty-five until seven AM. So overnight.
But they're, they've broken up in what, two or three?
Two, two sections, so you can work eleven forty-five to, I think, three forty-five or four o'clock. I'd have to look, but. You can either come and do the whole night or you can do two different sections. But if you look at um F C. Hope dot O R G under the volunteer tab, then there's the link to sign up. But she just let me know that that is the largest need at the moment, so.
And you do have to stay awake if you volunteer overnight for that.
Yeah, you do have to stay awake for liability, same thing, unless somebody tells us otherwise.
Yeah. Okay.
What, um, any idea on the numbers?
We would see him.
We had, well, we've only been open for a few days. We had two and a cats the very first night, um, which was very, I've had a cat before. Um. So, and then last night, the same two as well from what I understand. So, but we just started. As of last year, we had, I think, thirty individual visits. Um, the most at one time was between five and six, which is about all that the facility can really, I mean, it could handle up to about ten, but yeah. We will see, but Tammy Wilson's doing a great job. She is the facility coordinator. So, and thanks to the Community Foundation for getting a grant for that.
All right.
I have one other thing.
Okay.
Um, but as I I mentioned at RDP today, so um, we have a two, the state has a two-fifty commission. Um, and that commission has been tasked with celebrating the country's birthday. Uh, Fulton County um, for some reason, had somebody, but they quit. Uh, I was reached out to by the Lieutenant Governor's um Chief of Staff. And uh, they connected me to the individual who has taken that over. It's Candy Hayes, Mitch Hayes' wife. And so she is the Director of the um Daughters of American Revolution. They will be having a meeting that anybody is welcome to attend to. Um, it is on December fourth at six PM at Mellow Mug. And so they will talk a little bit about what that commission is. What some of the projects are and see if there's any volunteers. I know Julie's coming, Andrea from the library, so they're gonna um see if there's things that they can put together. Any project that um is identified for Fulton County, um Candy has a secretary that can upload that. To the state website. And so any event will be put on the state website. Um, and so people can hopefully come to Fulton County and check out what we've got going on, but. We're a little bit behind from everybody else. We don't know who had it and who stepped down, but um, we at least have. People now and a a meeting. So anybody from the council is welcome to attend. Anybody's welcome to attend that's interested. Um, so December fourth at six PM at Mellow Mug.
All right, anything legal? Okay, no ADA concerns? Okay, any motion to, any other public comment? Much adjourned, so move. Moving seconded, all in favor, say aye.
It might be in a hurry.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.